Good evening, viewers of the City of the North Bend Planning Commission meeting for November 18th, 2024. We are going to be starting our meeting about five minutes late tonight, and we will be starting that shortly. I apologize for being late. I'm Ron Koosh, I'll be your chair this evening. Second over business is the approval of the minutes October 21st, 2024. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
All in entertaining, a motion to approve the minutes?
I don't think a motion to approve this.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against say nay. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is our scheduled public hearing. Now is the time for the advertised public hearing in the matter of case file number 627-H24-000027, HPLNG. Condition for variance to side yard setback in the R5 as residential zone. The criteria applicable to the request are set forth in chapters 18.16, 18.8 of North Bend City Code. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward that applicable criteria. The applicant bears the burden of proving that the applicable criteria has been met. The applicant in this matter is Michael Sutterfield. The owner of the subject property is Michael Sutterfield. Tonight's hearing is de novo hearing. Any person may testify or present evidence during this hearing. Any issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the land used part of appeal shall be raised not later than the close of the record at or following the final evidence you're hearing before this commission. Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford this body and the other parties an adequate opportunity to respond to these issues. Persons wishing to address the planning commission shall be limited to a period of three minutes per person, with preference being given to North Bend residents and non-resident business and property owners. If any group of three or more persons share a common viewpoint on any subject, wishes to address the planning commission during this time for comment, the group may select a spokesperson who shall present to the use of the group to the commission. Written testimony, informed petitions letters, et cetera, may be presented to the planning commission for consideration. The applicant will be allowed to make a lot of time to make this presentation, although the person speaking in favor or against the application shall have three minutes, the applicant will then have five minutes for the rebuttal testimony. Does any member of this body need to disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications with respect to tonight's hearing? I'll take that as a no. Does anyone have an objection to the seated commission members serving as a tribunal in this matter? Okay, take that as a no. We'll now hear from staff who will go over the staff report. Eric?
Good evening, planning commission. So the applicant in case file 627-24-000027-PLNG is the owner of the subject property and wishes to develop the highest and best use of their property. The subject property is 2,880 square feet, and it is an existing non-conforming parcel that maintains property rights similar to those properties in the same zone or vicinity. As such, the applicant has requested a three-foot variance from the side yard setback on the side yard fronting Delaware Avenue. This is to the north, which is a street that cannot feasibly be developed due to the existing topography. This would result, if approved, in a seven-foot side yard setback rather than a 10-foot side yard setback. The authority to grant or deny variances sits with the planning commission. The variance may not be injurious to adjoining property owners and may be conditioned to allow for minimal impact through adjacent properties. In the proposed final order, beginning on page 15 of your packet, the application criteria for variances compared against the standards and requirements of the underlying zone showing that this application can comply with the applicable provisions for granting a variance. I would like to add to the record here is that the planning department, since submitting your packets to you, has received two public comments on the application, and they will be also included in the written record of this application. The first comment received, and summarizing, states that a three-bedroom, two-bath home may not fit on the subject property and also have room for parking. If the requested three-foot setback is on the south, then it would be closer to the neighbor's house, which could be a fire risk. And finally, that there is a City of North Bend water drain pipe that runs across Mr. Sutterfield's property. So working through each of these concerns, starting at the top and working down, the first concern is that a three-bedroom, two-bath house will not fit with parking. As shown on the site plan in your packets, the proposed development does fit and provide enough room for off-street parking. A standard parking space per code is nine feet by 18 feet, and it need not have a setback that, as it is in a structure. And it doesn't have to be pull-in, it can be parallel to the house. All this provides is that it's an all-ironed surface. The second concern is the location of the variance. I mean, very clear, this setback that's requested variance, that the requested variance is for is on the north rather than the south. So the end result, if you approve, would be that this development is actually further away from that neighbor's house. So it would not violate any fire code or building code by approving this variance. And finally, the drainpipe reference is a privately owned and maintained line. The City of North Bend did not install the line and did not accept it for maintenance. This is confirmed by our public works director. The second comment received simply states that they are okay with the applicant's request for variance. It was one sentence, it was very short. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this application. Otherwise, staff supports a proofable of this variance.
So the fire issue was, that's why I kind of was nervous about just putting the house so close to the joint property. Whatever the small, the way I grew this. But, so can we tell him he has to stay a certain, I think it'd be 15 feet away from a existing structure?
No, so the building code requires, the building code is the least restrictive of anything, and it requires a three foot from a property line, so that's six feet between structures. Now, this, in approving this variance, it would shift the structure further north, away from that structure, the neighboring structure. So it would be, you know, because otherwise, everyone's setback is five feet per code on that side of the yard. It's just the only reason that they're requesting a variance, because if Delaware Street flooded, it's not true, it's not going to be improved according to our fellow works director. And so that's kind of where it's coming from, is that there's not a vision clearance issue here.
So we have, is there language, you don't have language in the judicial use permit for them to cite the house physically farther away from the other house?
You can condition it, as planning commission, absolutely. So the variance is for an adjustment to that north property line, or property setback. So if you would want to reduce that further, three feet is allowable by building code, but no closer to that property line is possible by building code. Which, yeah, we're talking about zoning degrees, and I hate that.
But they're, so they're asking for five feet, so?
They are asking for three. They're showing a five-foot setback. That's the target minimum, but should planning commission want to move that further north to increase that setback, then that is within your rights.
What's the, what's the, what's the city requirement?
Five feet, on that side.
So Derek, where will the entrance, the rule of driveway be directly north?
The driveway is proposed currently to run north-south along the west side of that property. So there would be a 10-foot front yard setback, because there's no garage in this case. It would just be a house, and so they would have kind of like a pull-in, pull-out driveway, as was proposed currently.
Okay, so the west side of the square that's blocked out?
Correct.
Not over in area between that and the middle?
Correct.
So if we require him to be five feet away from the property line, you're okay with encroaching onto the city right of it?
Not encroaching into the city right of way. So there's, basically, he's asking for a seven-foot side yard setback on the north side rather than 10-foot, which would push that further south, and 10-foot is the administrative allowance. So if he just built within that 10 feet, he could be five feet down south. But if planning commission finds it prudent necessary that he's further away from that south property line, then you could adjust up to a minimum of a three feet on that north property line.
Other questions for Derek? Okay, we'll now hear from the primary applicant, Michael Sutterfield, who has 15 minutes to present his case.
And he is not present this evening.
That was a quick 15 minutes. We'll now hear from any other person in support of the application. Each will have three minutes. Three minutes? We'll now hear from anyone who is neutral on the application. I will note that we do have an email that says, "I'm okay with Michael and Adam Sutterfield getting their variance for this property." And now we'll hear from anyone who is opposed to the application. I will note that there is an email that has come in after our packet that Derek had mentioned. The neighbor is concerned that there's not a way that to fit a house in it. And that comes from I think there's a lot of words here.
Name should be on the first page there.
So at that point, we have no comments, the evidence letter, Derek, or anything?
Nothing that I want to add.
Oh man, I'm important, I have to.
Yes.
Do any members of the commission have any further questions for the parties? There were no parties. Final questions for Derek? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public comment, and we'll enter in the motion. I'll enter hand motion to close public comment. So, there's a second?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Well now, closed public comment to begin deliberation, directed may only be opened by vote of the planning commission. What is the will of the commission?
Right, what was your concern about the setback? Well, there's an existing structure there, and I think it needs to be far and away away from the old spread of the fire. That's just, and then, you know, the thing that me is, our second public hearing tonight is on these little tiny houses. You know, you can build a house there, you set it up. And, yeah, so I don't feel bad telling them, I mean, I hate telling people what to do, but I just think you can't. This existing structure that's been paying their taxes and shouldn't be at risk, that's the reason why. Or, you know, likewise, if this guy builds a new house too close to the old house, it's not a fire, it's a mess. So I just think that, that's the whole purpose of setbacks. I'm usually pretty amiable about doing these things, but I just don't like fireworks, fireworks. So if we're through it, you would say not to see five-foot setback? Not, you know, any satisfied five-foot setback, not necessarily. Yeah, just, just to kind of make it up, yeah, yeah. I hate to get some people off their property and block the house that's right, but.
Oh, we should, we have.
This thing, you have, Derek, there was some point.
And Derek, have you seen plans for, well, I can't ask that now.
Well, it shows, it talks about this bridge line, manufacturer house. They have a, you know, house, we just want to tell them to stay a certain distance from the property line as long as the city is okay with it going north.
Yeah, so I have a motion.
I don't know if we're just you don't have any supplemental or any?
Proposed motions are at the beginning of the action.
Yeah, I make a motion through the case of the board. 627-24-000031, planning? Nope.
27.
27. Sorry. 27, based on the facts, planning is in the staff report, post power, just to receive responses to say, "Del, come." However, I have, with the stipulation, we have to stay five feet away from the property line with our new structure. Second.
Motion on a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passed. On to the next. Now is the time for the advertised public hearing in the matter of case file number 627-24-0031, HPLNG. Application for a planned housing development in a residential R7 zone. Could be applied E by S13W22BA Axlet 12. The applicable criteria to the request are set forth in chapters 18.08, 18.04, 18.64, 18.68, 18.08, 18.12, and Title 17 of North Bend City Code. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward that applicable criteria. The applicant bears the burden of proving that the applicable criteria has been met. The applicant in this matter is HGE Architects. The owner of the subject property is L2L Modular LLC. Tonight's hearing is de novo hearing. Any person may testify or present evidence during this hearing. Any issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the land used part of appeal shall be raised not later than the close of the record at the following or at the following final evidence you're hearing before this commission. Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford this body and the other parties an adequate opportunity to respond on this issue. Persons wishing to address the planning commission shall be limited to a period of three minutes per person, with preference being given to North Bend residents and non-resident business and property owners. If any group of three or more persons sharing a common viewpoint on any subject wishes to address the planning commission during the time for comment, the group may select a spokesperson who shall present the use of the group to the commission. Written testimony and informed petitions letters, et cetera, may be presented to the planning commission for consideration. The applicant will be allowed to, time to make their presentation. All other persons speaking in favor or against the application shall have three minutes. The applicant, applicant will then have five minutes for rebuttal testimony. Does any member of this body need to disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications with respect to tonight's hearing? Does anyone have an objection to the seated commission members serving as a tribunal in this matter? There are none? So now we'll hear from staff who will go over the staff report.
Thank you. So the applicant in this case, file number 627-24-000031-PLNG, is a design professional on behalf of the property owner. The applicant in this case wishes to develop a planned unit development or planned housing development. These terms are interchangeable throughout the documentation provided to you and in our zoning code. The subject property is approximately 3.4 acres, which meets the criteria for a planned development and is appropriate. The proposal is 22 single-family dwellings featuring eight single-story homes, eight two-story homes, and six two-stories with partial daylight basements and roof decks. Each of the proposed housing unit types are typical throughout each phase of the plan and will generally meet all applicable criteria of the underlying zone. There will be parking for each of the units, as well as some overflow parking on-site that will serve guests and households with more than one vehicle. The scale and massing of each unit type will be typical for what is found within the adjacent residential zones, and no concerns were raised due to massing or scale of development. To the west is probably to the wetlands, which the applicant will not be impacting as part of the housing portion of this development. There has, however, been a proposal to include a nature viewing deck down on level there. And this would be permitted through the Department of State lands, would be a conversation at that level, but is generally outside of the scope of this application as it can be removed from the plan or installed without affecting the rest of the development. The maximum density of the site is 43 units, which is the maximum hypothetical density, that is not what they are proposing. And the applicant is proposing approximately half of that. The zone district allows for up to 70% lot area to be impervious surface, with this development coming in at approximately 19%. There are no major concerns with these preliminary plans from the planning department. The property notice was sent out to interested parties on October 28th. In the proposed final order, there was a crosswalk between the application and the applicable criteria as pertains to planned unit developments. I'm going to kind of run through that real quick. Planned unit developments and planning communities are allowed in any zone except for the R10 as conditional use within the City of North Bend, provided that they comply with North Bend City Code 18.64, which covers planned unit developments. This is, this property is zone R7, and therefore complies with this criteria. PUDs, planned unit developments, shall comply with the North Bend City Code, Title 17 of the North Bend City Code, except that design standards may be varied by planning commission based on the finding that they're, that the particular standard is unnecessary or inappropriate for a particular planner development. As mentioned previously, the site is approximately 3.4 acres, but PUDs have the minimum of 3 acres. The reason this is done is due to a density offset, and so you effectively allocate X amount of your property to open space and park space, quote unquote, or shared common space, private roads, things of that nature. In the trade office, you can build slightly denser housing on one portion of it with the implication that you're not going to develop the rest of it. So, let's see. Let's see, lot coverage, parking, and impervious surface are all satisfactory as, as review items. Um, and have some flexibility pending any engineering apartment tweaks to the final plan, given that they're well under the, a lot of limitation there. Access is required to be from a residential street, which it is, um, and pro development would generate less than five hundred trips per day. And at that level, it would trigger a traffic impact study, which we're not going to get into. Um, internal private streets and roadways shall be maintained in common ownership. Uh, this criterion is met from the CCNRs, the provisions and restrictions, um, and may be controlled by homeowners association or other legal entity. Um, yards, abiding common areas may be reduced in size so long as the common space serves, uh, serves the same purpose as a yard. And the purpose of a yard, generally speaking, is livability and that fire separation distance. Um, planning commission may reduce setbacks should they find it appropriate, and the applicant proposes, um, just over code minimum style side yards, um, which would result in an implied variance under this application. And the application in this development plan is complete in accordance with the, uh, the next section of code, otherwise it would be before you this evening. The conditions that the city has felt necessary for the preservation of property rights for both the subject property and adjacent property are as follows. All roads in the development are to be private roads. Um, and underneath this section, minimum common wage shall be forty-five feet to include sidewalk, curb, gutter, and travel lanes. Um, interconnected pathways shall be included throughout the site as prescribed with the City of North Bend code. Um, one C is final broadly agreed construction plans are subject to approval by the engineering department. And coming out of that level, um, setbacks may be reduced to not less than three feet from property lines in accordance with, uh, North Bend City Code eighteen point six four point oh two oh sub seven, sub C. And again, this meets the building code minimum. Broadway alignments shall be resolved prior to final plot approval. And these criteria ensure that code minimums are met and often exceeded to achieve maximum compliance. Um, and then we did receive, uh, one letter that is before you this evening, and we have one public speaker, um, from the same. And the, the concern was that, uh, parking would be impacted in the area. And it's important to note that on this application, uh, the minimum parking requirements are met and exceeded by this development because they have some overflow parking available for tenants or owners. Um, so staff recommends approval of case file number six, two, seven, dash, two, four, dash, zero, 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 three, one, dash, PLNG. It's important to remind you that in approving case file number sixty seven, dash, two, four, dash, zero, 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 three, one, dash, PLNG, that means that this development will have preliminary planning approval to advance to the next design stage and authorize the public works department to review development plans between now and final plot approval. If you approve this case, it will come back before you for final acceptance. So if you approve this, this is not the last you'll see of it. You will see a final plot before they actually get out of the ground. Um, and I'd be happy to hear your questions as well. Uh, we have Doug Clapples on the line. Um, he's one of the partners in the project, and then we have the design professional from HGE Architects Incorporated here in person as well. Um, so with that, I would pass back to the commission.
Thank you, Derek. Questions for Derek?
So probably we don't do CCNRs at the city level. We don't, they just have to submit it, but we don't have any business with it, correct?
Uh, correct. We, we, the city does not enforce CCNRs. The purpose of, uh, that the inclusion in the packet is to show that they are working towards, uh, those open spaces being commonly owned. Um, but that is pretty much the, the primary purpose. And then the primary applicant, H G, mentioned in a couple places in their application, um, C, 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 CCNRs. Um, and so I wanted to make sure those were included so that we fill out those blanks.
Questions? So this is an unusual development, at least for North Bend. Thanks for keeping us on our toes, Joe.
I, I just want to verify that all of the conditions for the city, all the city code has been met for this government.
Yes. Yes, so with this preliminary plan at this level of review, um, all conditions are currently met and, um, I have heard no objections from the primary applicant or the property owner on the conditions on the proposed final order. And, yeah, so, so this has been through public works through and through. Um, we've now had the, the design professional, we've now had she property owner, uh, spoke, Mr. Clapples extensively. Uh, and tried to answer as many questions as possible to make sure that this was as complete as possible or we're going to.
Put a lot of work in this thing. Thank you. Um, other questions before we, before we go? Okay, thank you, Derek. Uh, we'll now hear from the primary applicant, HGE Architecture, and possibly the developer, if that's appropriate.
Did you want your picture here?
Yeah, might as well. I, uh, don't have much of a show, but I did bring the drawings. I can kind of explain, explain the project a little more. Derek, do this thing.
And then, Joe, you can just use the mouse to scroll. Oh, yeah.
It is a unique site, unique project. I appreciate those comments. Nicky's trying to turn the key on.
It's interesting that the property boundary goes into the white.
Way far.
Just observation.
If you guys, I'll just take a few minutes and walk through these. Can you see them on your screen?
I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, great. So, um, like you mentioned, the east end of the property is the developmental part of the parcel, and it's about a third of the three acres. And then it drops off down, down to the, what, Pony Creek Wetlands. And so, but it's, you know, it works, it works in the developer's favor because we have this huge bunch of property that we can't develop, so it's green, open space. And, uh, it's a fairly narrow lot. It's a hundred and sixty-five feet wide, so there's not a lot we can do in terms of vehicle or access in and out of the property. So the, this is the existing survey. And, uh, again, these, these are the contours right here that you can see where it's, the contour lines are far apart, meaning that it's relatively level. Then it drops down pretty good, and the, the survey indicates where the wetland boundary is with this line right here. So that's, that's, we don't want to go any further than that without getting into a lot of permit issues with corriged air and whatnot. So we're staying out, staying out of that. These contours right here, this, the ground does start falling down a little bit away from us as well. So, uh, we went through several different iterations on trying to make, you know, develop it in a way that made the most sense, from a constructability standpoint also. So, um, the codes, you know, we have the fire code, we have the building code, and then, of course, we have the city municipal code. Um, so getting into the site, accessing the homes, uh, having, being able to have a fire truck be able to get in there and turn around. Uh, we, you know, explored a great big cul-de-sac, but we just took up too much room. So this is a prescribed, what they call a hammerhead turnaround for fire trucks, and the, the dimensions are such that they're in compliance. So that basically kind of sets a stage for how to, uh, get cars in and out of the site. This, this west side is sort of the, the money shot, if you will, of, of the development, where those units are this unrestricted view out into the wetlands. It'll, it'll be really nice units. We are creating more level ground by, uh, building a significant retaining wall on this west edge. I think we're maybe twelve foot or so tall, just to create more flat ground, uh, for putting the homes on them. The homes are narrow. They're, this isn't a tiny home development, but it is a small home development. They're fourteen feet wide. Um, Derek mentioned the, well, the hearing before this one about the setbacks. The co, the building code allows you to get up to three feet, but we're three and a half feet just to get room for some face shed and gutters and whatnot. So, uh, the units are at a minimum about seven feet apart with a property line running right between them. So these units on this side, uh, face north, there'll be decks on the back, on, on the north side. These units are intended to be two-story and with patios on the backside. Uh, and then parking is in front, parallel parking is in front. These units on the west side are, uh, three-story with a garage space at grade, so they will have parking inside as well as parking in their driveways. We have to deal with the twenty-foot setback that's common for, um, anytime you have a garage, you have to have enough room for the car to park on your property. So, uh, and then, and then we have pedestrian walkways connecting everywhere. Uh, we have some Disney crosswalks, we have dumpsters spot right here. This, I didn't realize this was an issue, but we wanted to create a little bit of common space, and so the folks that live here will be, could come down the sidewalk and maybe walk down this trail and go along the wetland. I'd say if we'd be well below, below these other units, it could be a little beak deck there, but, uh, we'll have to see how the details flush out on that. We did, we did provide even more parking, um, off-site with these headed parkings as well, because there's enough room there as well. This, uh, this building section here shows how those westerlymost units, uh, will be sited. And so we'll cut prop, we'll cut earth from the east side and use it to create this level ground. So we'll have a daylight basement, garage spot right here, and then we have two, uh, main level, and then an upper floor, and then a roof deck with the stick, enclosed stairs that would take you up there. And this is, we're showing this earth form, uh, retaining wall right here, earth reinforced. And then there's a potential to have a little beak deck. If we can do it in a non-impactful way, um, that would, that'd be pretty slick.
Joe, you have about five minutes left.
Okay. So this is a preliminary grading plan. We're collecting all this.
I'm sorry, I was wrong.
Okay, five more minutes. But this is a preliminary grading plan. We're collecting all the downspouts and surface water into our, uh, into our storm system. And then I think I've got a utility plan right here. Oh, this is our landscape plan. I think one of the conditions we have to identify where these trees are being placed. Uh, so we'll, we'll finalize that. And then, uh, here's our utility plan where, uh, we do have, the green line is sewer. There's actually, there has to be a city sewer right out here in the wetland, um, that will tap into this manhole down here, so everything kind of picks up. Come, we pulled these two units apart a little bit more, so we'll provide an easement to get through, access to get through there. And then we have, the blue line is water, the purple line is storm grain, uh, where we'll, uh, collect all our, I mean, all our surface water. The units are, uh, here's a, here's a grid line here. The units are, at the time of our application, I, we're intended to be manufactured units. We would be, HGR would be responsible for the site work and the site development as well as the foundation, and then they bring these units onsite, place them. I think that's a, Doug, who I heard is on the phone, he may be able to expand on a little bit more, but that's, that was at the time of, uh, applications, you know, that was the plan, so.
Joe, you're correct, that, uh, we, we'll be building, I think these might just be onsite.
Site built, yeah.
Yeah, site built, yeah.
So that's where we're at, commissioners. I'm happy to take some questions. It's a neat project.
So these will be site-built, and I also see they're modular.
Yeah.
So the panels will be brought in and.
Well, no, they, uh, at the time of the application, they were actually, uh, be like a modular home, if you will, that would be craned onto the foundation. But it sounds like developed, Doug's looking, they're looking to maybe site build too. I'm sure it's a matter of economics.
Same product, just, uh, built different, just, uh, the modular ones we would have, we would have trucked in, same products, same, uh, structurally insulated panels. Instead, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna ship those panels in directly onsite and build onsite.
Okay, so they will be handled.
Correct.
And we have to go through building code, obviously, so there'll be, uh, final construction documents, construction drawings that will reflect meeting energy code and structural code and what have.
Ruth, then your construction data, are you, uh, what you're going to do with this?
Uh, that's a good question. I, I, I don't know if we alluded to it, but this on the north side is intended to be phase one.
Okay.
And so they're gonna do it in phases, so they'll be able to use some ground, um, onsite to look through that. The last phase, I believe, is the, is this west side, so that'll be when things kind of get kind of tight.
And on that hammerhead, Joe, you showed a car there on the north edge.
Yeah.
So is that open space between there and the, of course, residence?
It's, it's sidewalk. You mean right, right here?
Yeah, to the left of the car, or, or that, will that be open?
Yeah, that has to be maintained, yeah, that's all.
And the same on the south edge.
Yeah, yeah, this will all be maintained, or wide open. This, yeah, this is some visitor parking down here and over here.
Yeah? Another question? Okay, will you admit that person ready and then here? You do. Take a sec. I had, if you have some. Hey, thank you, Joe. We'll now hear from any person in support of the application. Three minutes. You're neutral. Okay.
Well, I just, this, this, uh, we'll say so, but, uh, it's all. My name is Harry Abel, and I got a stroke, so, but, um, I am here as elder reference setting shoreline to New Muti Church in North Bend. I would like to address the concern that has been expressed by our membership to assembling that planned housing project and visiting the, of our church. Our church, uh, is, uh, of supporters for this city plans to create more housing to, uh, do our true need and community. Our concerns represent a parking, um, and a possibility of that, uh, construction parking should be affected by our church. Our church has about two hundred and fifty members and a hundred and twenty-five, uh, spots. Uh, our membership includes many senior who are new to park as close to the church as possible. Uh, we just wanted to, uh, ensure that our parking lot will not be affected by, uh, the, uh, plan, uh, unit and, uh, personal vehicles during our construction on the. on the use of our parking spot for members. So that's a good, uh, I said, uh, parking, uh, Joe has got parking, but I don't know about, uh, two or three parking spaces and one parking space, okay. But, uh, have you got two parking spaces? And I say, uh, that will be a concern for the church as long as parking spaces are allowed. And so, uh, I, I don't know if we can put up, uh, no parking signs, uh, but that's good. So, any questions?
Harry, thank you for coming. So are you concerned with the area to the west of the church between the west edge of the church and the development, is that where you're concerned?
Yes, yeah. Sure, sure. Mark is alert, good. There will be no, um, shipping in, and so, good. So I got trucks that will be coming through that, uh, thing, and, uh, but that's for good.
Harry, that, that, all that parking spaces for the church has all yours, right?
Yes.
And Harry, do you have parking in the north side of the church?
No, well, yes, uh, parts all, uh, the north, uh, eight parking spots there and parking spots on the south side and west side of the church.
Okay, more for Harry? Okay, thank you. We'll now hear from any person in opposition to the application. Three minutes. You can't be in opposition.
Well, I know, but I don't know if Doug wanted to add anything, but, before you kicked into. Doug, did you have anything to add?
Uh, you know, in regards to Harry's comments, totally understandable. But we feel that we could mitigate those, that, uh, those issues during the construction phase as well as if we need to, we'll, we'll put up no parking signs, uh, for Harry's area as well as the church area. And, you know, I wouldn't be opposed if that, our parking spaces are open during church service, that we would welcome their folks using the, if there's, as overflow. So I can understand Harry's concerns, for sure. But I think we can mitigate those.
So anything else from Eric or H G E?
Uh, no, nothing, nothing to really add, other than those parking lots, their parking spots along the north side of the church are 100% on their property. If for some reason this ever became an issue, um, the church would be well within the rights to tell people off those parking spots that were unauthorized users.
And Derek, I noticed on the map that Joe had a, that as a street goes on the west side of the church between church and development is B Street.
Yes.
So I assume that there's some parking restrictions along B Street as well. I think you can't park in the middle of the street.
Can't park in the middle of the street, correct, yes.
Even though it's not a street, it's a street.
Correct, yes, there's a plowed driveway there. So outside of, on those driveways, we developed full lit, where you have on-street parking both sides, which it can't be because it was a flat, but, uh, you're not gonna have on-street parking there. It will be entirely on what property or another.
Joe?
Yeah, I can address the parking a little bit more. Appreciate the comments. So the, the use requires one spot per unit, and so that's 22 parking spaces. We have one and a half times, which sometimes we see that zoning ordinances where they'll require one and a half per unit for apartments. And that's about what we have, we have 34. So one and a half would be 33 units. So we have about 34 parking spaces. That includes, that includes a parking spot inside the garage, plus two spaces in front of those units on the west. And then there's parking on, on the surface in, in board of the smaller units to the east. So we have all the required parking, um, and 50%, 50% more than required onsite. And then we're creating another eight parking spaces on B Street that are in the right of way, that can be used by whoever. So, um, I think we're kind of accommodating the parking pretty well. Hope that, hope that helps, uh, relieve Shoreline's concerns.
So the eight spots on B Street could be used by whoever.
Yeah, they don't, the developer, that's a public right of way.
And, yeah, that, that's definitely part of the plan. That was part of the plan, because I believe Harry and, and I believe the church had actually dedicated some of their own lot next door to ours for parking. So we figured, if that's an issue, why don't we add, add to the program and add some parking for them as well? And it could be a win-win for everybody.
Do any members of the commission have any further questions for the parties before we close the public hearing and begin deliberations? I do that. I will not entertain the motion to close the public comment.
You have a motion to close the public comment.
Second, correct. On favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, we'll now close the public comment period and begin deliberation. The record may only be opened by a vote of the planning commission. What is the role of the commission?
This prelim, we had an issue with looking so hard. Move forward. All right, go ahead.
I'll make it unanimous. So I, I think that, firstly, I think that we, we need housing in North Bend. And this is kind of a goofy-looking setup, Joe. But, um, it, but it meets all the criteria, it meets the criteria. So I, I applaud you for your creativity in giving this. So I'll take the motion.
I approve the application for case file number 627-24-000030-PLNG. The comprehensive plan amendment version 1999, Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The criteria applicable to the request are set forth whereafter is 1884 of North Bend's SEC code, all testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria. The applicant bears the burden of burden of the applicable criteria of the matter. The applicants in this matter is the city of North Bend. Tonight's hearing is a normal hearing. Any person may testify or present evidence during this hearing. Any issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the land use board will be held not later than the close of the record and or following the final evidence hearing before this commission. Said issue shall be raised and accompanied by statements of evidence sufficient to afford this body and the other parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Persons wishing to address the planning commission shall be limited to a period of three minutes for persons. Person with preference being given to the North Bend resident, resident and non-resident, business and property owners. If any group of three or more persons sharing a common viewpoint on the subject wishes to address the planning commission during the time of comment, the group may select a spokesperson who shall present the views of the group to the commission. Written testimony, informed petitions, letters, et cetera, may be presented to the planning commission for consideration. The applicant, applicant will be allowed time to make their presentation. All whether the person is in favor or against the application shall have three minutes. The applicant will then have five minutes for rebuttal testimony. Does any member of this body need to disclose any conflicts of interest or experte communications with respect to tonight's hearing? Does any member of, oh, does anyone have an objection to the seated commission members serving as a tribunal in this matter? Okay, Derek?
All right. So this is the last public hearing, and then we have other business. So case file number 627-24-000030-PLNG is a two-pronged ask from the plant, for the planning commission. One, that the planning commission recommend adoption of the updated Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which has been included in your packets and a fresh copy provided before you this evening. In that fresh copy, on the first page, there is a list of, uh, seven changes that have been made since it was sent out to you. Pretty minor little text things, filling in some blanks, but nothing too wild. And then number two, that the planning commission recommend adoption of the ordinance included in the packet, changing the comprehensive plan to, uh, basically get rid of language addressing the 1999 plan and just change it to Parks and Recreation Master Plan. What this will do is kind of future-proof our, um, our comprehensive plan in order, so if, if we update this Parks and Recreation Master Plan in the interim, you know, say if we do it 15 years instead of 20, um, we don't have to go out and change the comprehensive plan again. It'll just say Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We'll know that the current one is the one that was adopted by council by, or by ordinance. So this does not, this change does not materially affect the comprehensive plan in any way. It does not change the way that it functions, does not change the guiding principles contained within it. The only thing that it does is changes the guiding document from the expired Parks and Recreation Master Plan to the updated Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The consultant on this project has been H G E, um, different team than we presented just a second ago. And they have worked with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan steering group, which has met many times over the last year to guide planning content and help to write feedback on the plan. Furthermore, surveys were sent out via Water Bills in August. That consultant also attended a Seven Stroll event and collected survey results. And both of those events, or both of those survey collection efforts have been incorporated into the plan as suggestions and guiding principles for our next 20 years of Parks and Recreation. Staff supports approval of this application 67-24-000030-PLNG. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Yes?
Got any questions? What is Reven Park?
Reven Park is the official name for the, uh, the park just on the other side of the fire department. So it's obviously on the north side of the park, northwest side of the fire department, where there's the big cross-section of the tree. Yeah.
And the second one was, so there was, it used to be a, uh, in the city, old city plan, there was a park back in, behind my house.
Yes.
Is that still in there?
That is still included in there. It is, it went through a name change at some point or another. I believe it's now called College Park. It is designated a parkland, but it has not been developed into a park, if that makes sense. One of the suggestions in there was, uh, potential nature viewing, but it's not been, you know, there's no, there's a lot of suggestions in the plan, but there's not a firm, you must, you shall do this.
So I'd worked, heard about six months ago, that's being looked at, being disposed of. This still as a park, it can't be disposed of? Or that was maybe part of the package of properties that the city is gonna try to sell?
In the context of this application, I'm not sure. I could definitely look into that and give that to you, though.
It's not game soul?
No, there's adjacent property to that, but that particular property is the one that we've been slowly infilling for future development, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, well, you guys have the job site.
Yes, yes, we, it, it's, it's been infill to make it actually useful, uh, parkland. But no, there is property adjacent, um, to the south, I believe, that potentially could be surplus. And it's on the left. But this particular, no, the parkland, there's no parkland on any surplus land, unless whatsoever.
Okay, okay. So where is that?
Well, south of, uh, Hyden?
It, it's at the end of Oak Street. Yeah, that's at the south end of Oak Street, basically where it terminates into Hughesburg. Or just before it terminates into Hughesburg, I should say.
Right next to Collin Park.
Further south.
Further south. There's a big, it's a big gully course, there's a flat, but it's a lot of property in there. A lot of ownership there.
Yeah, part of my experience, there used to be a basketball court there. And then there was some, some land swapping for potential housing development. And so around that time, they swapped park names, is, is what my limited understanding is from hanging out with Ralph.
Yes, Ralph Ralph is a wealth of information when it comes to this specific area. I mean, in general, but especially in this specific area.
No, no.
No, I would not say that.
He's, he's, he's a walking historian.
So, but it's like almost, yeah, a joke.
Oh, yeah, well, well, well.
Yeah, just behind it, we've been working on some defensive space clearing, not too far from that diagonal province that goes all the way out to New Mark.
Yeah, that's the big gully.
Very large gully, Ralph and I would have been down in it.
It goes all the way to go.
And you came out, also for.
I, I actually, as I recall, he either helped me or I helped him, I forget which. I think I helped him.
So then all of this area in the south of Kenny Street to Crusby, City Limits, is that all park?
Not.
No.
No.
There's a lot of bread and bursheep out there.
Oh, yeah. All right. No, no.
Okay. I slid in lots there.
There's a lot of this.
I know where we entered is our call. As you go down the gully, come back out, I guess that's my house, the house like on the other side. Yeah. Yeah, and then, but, but the area to the north would be the park space. The left, sort of running in that gully area, stretched behind houses in the wood, is the surplus area.
Okay, so questions for Derek? Well, now I hear from any person in support of the application, I'm sorry, was there something over there? In support of the application? We will not hear from anyone in the central on the application. We'll not hear from any person in opposition to the application. City administrator, are you in opposition?
Heck, no, not at this cost. This is a lot of work, a lot of expense. I'm all for, I'm just keeping my, well. Yeah, and then, but, but the area to the north would be the park space. The left, sort of running in that gully area, stretched behind houses in the wood, is the surplus area.
Thank you. Okay, so questions for Derek? Well, now I hear the main person in support of the application, I'm sorry, is there something over there? In support of the application? We will not hear from anyone in central on the application. We will not hear from any person in opposition to the application. City Administrator, are you in opposition?
Heck, no, not at this cost. This is a lot of work, a lot of expense. I'm all for, I'm just keeping my, well...
Any last words from Derek? I don't think I do. Do any members of the commission have any further questions? I would not entertain motion to close public comment.
Make a motion to close public comment.
And a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Oppose. Now, what is the role of the commission?
Based on what Derek saw, this is the, this is the updating of language, and that is it.
So...
The basics have not changed.
The, the plan content has changed. So the, the plan itself, this, this document is, you know, our guiding principles for the next twenty years. And, you know, there's some capital, pending capital improvement plan in there, which kind of addresses some major projects that should be addressed. Part of this issued, so the, so this investigation, you know, identified some areas of immediate improvement. So the plan itself is all new. This plan, the comprehensive plan change that is going to be changed by ordinance or if you, you know, were to approve this, that does not materially change anything without the comprehensive that works. That, that changes just to change the title from nineteen ninety nine plan to Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
So do the master plans have a sunset date when they say this will be picked and told? And what is the date of the current plan?
So, so it's not a date, it's a year, so we can just call it January first, right? So the current plan expired in twenty twenty.
That's what I thought I read.
Yeah, so we got a grant from Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, and they partially funded an update for us. And that is documented, it's before you, in your copies, I handled it.
Questions, comments, complaints?
I have no further, um, consulting questions.
So just as a question again. Previous plan expired four years ago, four, five years ago, and have a plan. What happens if we don't update the plan? Does the world cease to exist? We can have no more parks?
The world may cease to exist. I, I don't want to push this any further, honestly. No, so basically, Oregon State has their planning goals, which, you know, so if you're passing the line with the very least. That's what we reviewed here, you know, that's the basis of our zoning code, that's the basis of a comprehensive plan. So one of those goals is parks and open space. And so as a, you know, community in Oregon, in order for us to administer a land use program, in order for planning commission to, you know, be the authority, we have to accommodate for all those different planning goals. And so having Parks and Recreation Master Plan addresses that goal. And, you know, it, it... The, the concept is they would provide a, a plan that's publicly accessible and have public involvement for guiding our Parks and Recreation within the city.
That makes sense, you know, people need to get more involved in these parks. You know, this, because all the other parks, they, like in Eugene, they really, really done up their parks up there for people that are handicapped, you know, making, making parks more wheelchair accessible.
Yeah.
Now, I noticed that that was in the plan as well, so...
That's a large part of the plan, is just accessibility upgrades. Absolutely.
I think it's a good, good thing.
Okay. I'm waiting for a motion or a rebuttal.
How can we handle, how can we? Well, I have a rebuttal application for case files six two seven dash two four dash zero 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 three zero twenty. Based on the information presented by the applicant and responses and findings in this staff report.
Derek, I have a second.
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Make a motion, yes. Thank you, Derek. It looks like it's been a lot of work to do to this point. I would like to acknowledge that. And David, thank you as well. If you don't have.
I don't know.
We all always think...
Okay, so... We have a presentation and a recommendation before us regarding the substantial amendment to the Whitefinnen Urban Renewal Plan. Derek will introduce the link, including the consultant on the project, and she'll provide an update about what the project is and where he's going.
All right, so the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency is currently in the process of a substantial, not improvement amendment. We have this evening consultant for the Urban Renewal Agency, Elaine Howard, who has a presentation to discuss the planning commission's role in the project at large. We also have our city administrator, David Mullane, here this evening as well. And kind of what we're looking for tonight is a recommendation from planning commission to city council stating compliance with the North Bend City Code on comprehensive plan. Staff has reviewed the documents from the consultant and supports this application and finds that planning commission can make a recommendation to city council in this matter. And with that, I will let David and Mullane figure it out, pretty much go first.
Yeah, so thank you. And for the record, I am here in my role as executive director of the Urban Renewal Agency as well. So I wear multiple hats. And so Elaine, do you want to pull up the presentation? And then you now have co-host capability, so you are good to go.
There you go. Do you see my presentation?
Yes.
Great, thank you. My name is Elaine Howard. I am the consultant working with the city and urban renewal agency on this potential amendment. I'm working on this project with Nick Popenek and Ali Denko from Tiberius Solutions. They do all of our financial analysis. The things that I will go through tonight are the process and role of the planning commission, what the amendment is, the comprehensive plan conformance, and what the next steps are. The role of planning commissions in an urban renewal plan amendment is not specifically identified in the statute. The statute says that the plan amendment must be presented to the planning commission. The statute that governs urban renewal also says that the urban renewal plan amendment must conform to the comprehensive plan. I have been doing urban renewal consulting since two thousand and five, and we have always paired those two together because it is the planning commission's purview to review the comprehensive plan. And so it makes sense that the planning commission will make that recommendation on to the city council so that they can adopt that finding in the ordinance if they choose to adopt the urban renewal plan amendment. A plan amendment is adopted by allowing public input at all stages of the process. We have already gone to the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency for a review. They voted unanimously to send the amendment out through the rest of the public review process. That includes sending it to all of the different taxing districts for a consult and confer period with them, sending it to you, the planning commission, for your review of the conformance with the comprehensive plan. We will meet with the county to go over the plan amendment and the maximum indebtedness increase amount. The city council is scheduled to hold a hearing on December tenth and to vote on a non-emergency ordinance. That city council hearing has to be advertised to one of a variety of different groups. The city is allowed to choose which group. So it's utility customers, voters, residents, or... I think that's it. The urban renewal plan amendment adds projects to the existing urban renewal plan and also increases the maximum indebtedness. Maximum indebtedness is the controlling feature of urban renewal plans. An urban renewal plan has both projects to undertake, but also provides money to do those projects. So unlike many downtown plans or park plans or other plans, urban renewal actually provides a funding source to do those projects, and that funding source is tax increment financing. We also did general updating of the plan to bring it up to current standards, matching things that have changed in the statute since the last amendment to this plan. With the city, we have identified the potential projects to be undertaken within the plan. These projects are administration, personnel services, capital outlay, economic development, housing and government services. You can see that line item is the biggest line item, and we'll talk about that more on the subsequent slide. Downtown street skate grants, these grants are to improve both the structure of, of a business and can do interior improvements if, if, if approved. Street and utility upgrades, park and recreation funding, and then financing fees if the agency has to take out a loan. In constant fiscal year in twenty twenty four dollars, that's that first column of numbers, that equals thirty one million, seven hundred and thirty four thousand, seven hundred and fifty one dollars. In year of expenditure project costs, so over the lifetime of this plan, that equals thirty nine million, nine hundred and forty two thousand, two hundred and seventy eight dollars. That increase is the cost of inflation over the time period to expend those funds. The housing project that we are working with the city on getting approved in this amendment is a housing project for workforce housing. So it is with a priority to education, healthcare, public safety, and logistics workers. This project would be on the property that the agency purchased in twenty twenty one. It's a fifty four thousand square foot Shetterd County Annex. That annex would be demolished and new housing built on that site. The city is looking at construction, constructing approximately seventy two new housing units. They have already received four million dollars in federal funding secured in twenty twenty four specifically for that workforce housing. Again, the maximum indebtedness is a controlling feature of an urban renewal plan. This increase would increase that maximum indebtedness by thirty three million, six hundred and ninety nine thousand, two hundred and seventy seven dollars. That would mean that the tax increment financing for these projects would continue through fiscal year end twenty fifty five. So it is a thirty-year extension of taking tax increment funds. Tax increment does not increase a property owner's property taxes. Tax increment funds come from the assessor as a division of taxes that the other taxing districts do not receive because those monies go to the urban renewal area. This was put in a place when this urban renewal plan was adopted. So if this amendment goes forward, it doesn't mean an actual decrease in taxes. Any taxing district is presently getting. That just means they will continue not receiving any increase in assessed value within the urban renewal area until this urban renewal area terminates in the future. In terms of conformance with the comprehensive plan, when we provide the findings for conformance to the comprehensive plan, we look at the projects that are specified within the plan and make sure that they fit within the sections of the comprehensive plan that you have. The areas that we reviewed were the economic goal, and the finding for that is that the projects to be implemented will encourage the revitalization, expansion of the downtown business district by supporting businesses in the area, improving the conditions of buildings, providing increased housing opportunities, improving the transportation network, and improving the public services for the area. The second one we looked at was the housing goal, and the finding is the projects to be implemented will enable a range of housing opportunities, providing alternative housing types and workforce housing to serve the area. The third is the transportation goal. The finding is the projects to be implemented will improve the transportation network, including the streets, sidewalks, and street lighting within the area. The fourth is public services facilities. The finding is the projects to be implemented will provide new workforce housing in addition to providing for public services for a new city hall to be included within the, the housing project. The final is the recreation open space goal. The finding is the Parks and Recreation Project focuses on constructing ADA compliant restroom facilities and upgrading utility infrastructure in our parks. These enhancements will ensure accessibility for all residents and improve the overall functionality of our recreation spaces, making North Bend a more inclusive and enjoyable place to live, work, and play. This is a proposed motion for you. I can, I will take this down off of the screen so that we can discuss this further. I can always bring it up at the end if you desire. We put in a proposed motion because we know that you do not use urban renewal or have to renew urban renewal very often. So it is different from what you would normally have to consider. And again, the next steps, we are meeting with the county, the port and the school district, this planning commission meeting tonight, the city council hearing on December tenth, and city council vote also on December tenth. And that is the end of my presentation, and I don't know if David wants to add anything, and I am happy to answer any questions.
At this time, we'll defer to questions from the planning commission on the charge that is before them, which is the conformity to the city's master plan.
So your budget is forty million dollars?
The Urban Renewal Agency? If the maximum indebtedness is increased, yes, you potentially would have, but it's a growing budget. So right now, no, it's not. Current budget, I believe, is somewhere in the neighborhood of about three and a half million. That's because you spend money on projects and then you have tax increment coming in, paying down that debt. And so ultimately, if we have all this approved and we go out and bond the project, yes, potentially, we would have twenty five or thirty million of debt that would be paid off through the tax increment between now and that. The city of Coos Bay, for instance, has two urban renewal agencies. They dwarf this particular one in, in dollar amount because they have a higher tax base.
And that amount of money is over a thirty-year time period. So that amount of money is, is not, it's not now. It's anticipated over a thirty-year time period.
Is the tax rate, is it fourteen point two four, is that constant, the statute, it can't go up? Or can that go up pretty good?
So we have a legal provision for the tax rate. So we can only implement the maximum tax rate allocated to the Urban Renewal Agency. And so when this goes through the Urban Renewal Commission, they implement the maximum tax rate for the district. Our portion is only the increment on the original base, which was established when the district was created. Our portion is only the increment on the original base, which was established when the district was created.
So the assessed value will go up three percent per year, but the tax rate can also go up three percent?
It's the increment that is held at three percent or potentially higher on redeveloped properties. So for instance, it's why the urban renewal agency does facade grants or interior improvement is because they're on the tax rolls and when they reassess, they are then repaying back to all of the agencies additional increment on their valuation.
And that tax rate does not go up, just the taxes on the assessed value, which you're right, goes up about three percent a year.
So the the question that routinely comes up, this is not a new tax. If the urban renewal agency went away, you would be paying no less in taxes. You're still paying the same amount. There is a special urban renewal agency levy that is dropping off soon. And that had to do with tribal property and the additional levy that made up the difference when their property went into trust.
So do they care correctly that we're going to be including the city in all of the new housing?
So there's no guarantee. We put that in the plan because you have to plan. You can't just modify. And so the urban renewal agency nor the city council has decided what or how they're going to do. So we have discussed the fact that this building has outlived. It is also much larger than our actual needs. It was designed as a fire station and it's had multiple uses. And so the actual cost to get the seismic stabilization plus all of the upgrades necessary would far out cost actually incorporating city hall space in a new development. Also, we would get more housing out of if the fact, if this building was demolished, we could actually redevelop the entire block. And because we can go up on this end. And so some of the conceptual plants, not drawings, conceptual like, you know, top conceptual, has been that there is a large grade change between McPherson and Union. And so ideally, you would come into a parking garage off McPherson. That would be the parking for the apartments. Staff would go left into a cross gated area. And then at the far end here, we would have three or four stories that would be city hall space. Potentially, the first floor on Union in Virginia would potentially be dedicated to childcare, which is a necessity in our area. And then that would allow us to maximize the number of units here for program income. And then the top floor would all be green space because if you have daycare, you'll also have to have open green space. And that would be activity area for them, but also amenity space for the tenants as well. All conceptual. There's no drawings whatsoever. The only thing that has been drawn up is the initial financials to submit for the four million, which also included copies of inclusion of our master plan as well as our housing needs analysis and our housing implementation to show the need for this particular housing. We also, well, prior to submitting for that, had surveyed our local industries. And so we are the only federally funded project in the nation that was funded four million for specifically workforce housing, which designated priority housing for those four areas because it's those four areas that cannot find housing for their workers. And so therefore, if they can't find space, they are leaving the area. And so that is why they would have priority. Once that priority is exceeded, however, the last, the initial survey we did was a hundred and eighty two on the list when we did the countywide survey. So I would find it interesting if any outside this four criteria would live in there. Potentially, estimates are that there would be about fifty children in the the complex, although we, that is a conservative number. And the school district, which actually has a net, they, they actually give up nothing. They get a hundred percent of their tax revenue backfilled by the state. But the conservative estimate by the school district is fifty students at ten thousand dollars FTE per student would be about a additional half million windfall to the school system in revenue.
Does the port theater part of the demolition plan?
The urban renewal agency has had discussions with them and we have agreements in writing for potential acquisition.
So expiration for this would be in twenty twenty?
That's correct. And I also do want to point out that any reference to the school system will be removed from the plan prior to final adoption by the school system. The school system cursory had talked about commingled potential space and have requested not to be included. So the next bite of their apple would be in twenty fifty six. Unfortunately, I I'm sad to report that I will not be here. So I'll hand it on to my successors.
So when does the current URA expire?
It is a matter of maximum indebtedness. So we actually have current indebtedness and continue to have to fulfill out. And so if this particular maximum indebtedness does not pass all the agencies, we then do not do a maximum indebtedness as a substantial change. We do basically an increment. And so we can increment that. And Elaine, is that, if I'm not mistaken, is that ten percent of the original maximum indebtedness? Or I don't want to misquote that number.
Yeah, it's it's twenty percent of the original maximum indebtedness as adjusted by inflation every year. And we have not yet calculated that. We're hoping that this amendment will go through because this amendment allows that housing project to go through. The other lower amount that the city council can do on their own authority would not provide sufficient funds to do the housing project.
This, the the acquisition of the annex has been from get go, a shared vision of the county and the city to bring housing to North Bend. And so we've had to go through multiple hurdles to even get us to this point. For instance, brownfield cleanup, state historic preservation, among other things. And so we're at the point now that we have secured substantial investment. That investment normally would have come from the federal government sooner, but they had a government shutdown. So it put it about eight months behind schedule. And so that was submitted in twenty twenty two. And so we're here in twenty twenty four. But that's no different. Ralph is still working on a project that he got funding for in twenty twenty one and is finally implementing that project. So the wheels of government don't move as fast. But we, it is our expectation to try to demolish and start building next year. Permitting by the Banger School project is the end of the year and they'll start demolishing early next year. We're hoping to be able to dovetail from that project immediately to this project. So that if they win the same bid, that we can keep them moving in tandem.
Was there any other options besides housing or the annex? Do you remember anything else? Was it just with all, discuss that involved in pretty much on the same game? Terminated in the housing.
So
It's blank and needs to go away and get it.
So the building was actually built in multiple stages. And so it was heavily marketed for sale. There was only one other bidder. It was to actually make it nonprofit, potentially veteran housing. And so the only projects that have been on the radar for that building has been housing related. When, so the urban renewal agency, which of course, nothing moves fast. So while they're marketing, we have to go through our iterations of meetings, executive sessions, make offers, things like that. There were two offers considered by the county. They selected ours for the intent that when you look at your housing needs and implementation. In fact, you've seen that we, we, we've had a difference of opinions with the state formula, but there's about eleven hundred homes needed over a twenty year period. And if the government doesn't get involved, we're never going to get close to that. And we are meeting needs that otherwise no one is meeting. No one has aggressive, we're just suffering on any daycare whatsoever. It's been very, very hard. So we're getting a lot of support from that. And we anticipate potentially some additional state and federal tax dollars coming into the project to facilitate that. We've had those conversations. As I said, it's the only project of its kind in the country funded for workforce housing. This is not low income housing. This is not the same as say the Banger School. And it's not the same as say the projects that are market rent here. This is specifically about making sure that we are the de facto housing and fit that need for those folks in those professions. And the rents will be scaled based on their incomes for, with their employers. So it's not a free ride, but it's not, say, section eight, low income or market rent either.
And you're putting four different groups with groups, are they?
It is healthcare, education, public safety and logistics. For those not aware, logistics was specifically written in the bill for the container port project.
What's the story on the, you mentioned city hall. Did the city council approve using urban renewal funds to build a new city hall without going to the voter?
Actually, the city council is also the urban renewal agency. And so the urban renewal agency can actually build a city hall and then they're allowed to gift properties to the city.
But would they, could they, could the urban renewal agency and city council vote without, I'm just, I'm looking at what happens to the the Coos Bay library project, which just seems to be a never ending saga where they can't get the voters to approve it. Are, are, is North Bend able to just use urban renewal dollars to develop a new city hall without going to the voter?
Absolutely. Because we're using urban renewal agency dollars versus, most recently, that was a bond levy or a go bond, if you will. And so there, for instance, our rehab on our library has been with urban renewal agencies commingled with private grant funds. And so the difference though is, is how funds are allocated or have been allocated, if you will, or whether or not the library is within their district. And so I'm not familiar with with their specifics. But their most recent one that failed voters was general obligation bond or bonding, which would have been additional over and above. What we're doing doesn't cost our taxpayers anything additional.
So the the primary purpose for the increase in the urban renewal is for the houses building next door and possibly here is, just so I understand it, is the city financing the entire development? Or is that just, as you will see, to bring developers to do that?
So that will ultimately be decided by the governing body, the urban renewal agency. But at this point, it is planned that the urban renewal agency would pay for the whole thing because it will then have what's called program revenue. And since the city is limited to a three percent increment as general fund coming into the city coffers, the city and sixty three percent of other city governments are fiscally stressed. And so that program income can actually then supplement additional needs of the city because right now we're on a five year trajectory. And if that trajectory continues, the city general fund will be bankrupt in five years. And so this is an opportunity to have program funding, roughly about a million dollars per year to come in that would allow us to do other infrastructure needs. For instance, roads are on a hundred year rotation cycle here. But the URA then can actually supplement the general fund through program funding to continue providing needs that otherwise the tax dollars are not meeting. The other would be go to the taxpayers and ask them for additional levies and bonds. And unfortunately, there was forty initiatives statewide on the most recent election and only fourteen passed. You do the math.
None of them were in the South Coast, yeah?
That's correct. So we're trying to be very good stewards and be very creative and making the urban renewal agency a workhorse and economic developer and change agent for the city of North Bend.
So in that case, then, the city would own the development?
A specific agency would own the property.
A specific agency of the city?
Would be a, an agency. We don't know yet whether that would be, say, the city of North Bend, which doesn't want to be in the landlord business. The urban renewal agency is the same as the city and we don't want to be in the landlord business. However, we do have another initiative that is in play right now, which is called the land bank, which would be, is it the North Bend or the land bank of North, what's the name?
North Bend Land Bank Authority.
Okay, didn't want to confuse all these acronyms in the name. And that is being, that is a initiative being funded by the Banden Dunes Charitable Foundation with direct involvement with DLCD and will be a model land bank initiative that then can be implemented in other communities. And that then can bring in additional grant dollars, both state and federal for what's called blighted and or brownfield properties. And so it will allow us, for instance, with the initiative that the city council has done with these dilapidated properties that is identified, can transfer them, remove the liability off the city, put them in the land bank, have them demolished, have new housing built, put back on the tax rolls and then sold. And so land banks are not something very well known on the West Coast, but are very heavily Midwest and East Coast. However, there's been legislation on the books since, was it two thousand and seven?
I thought it was two thousand and sixteen.
All right, maybe two six, two thousand and sixteen, that has never gotten implemented by anybody. So we would be the first in the state to implement a land bank agency. That agency then can contract with a, a property management company and resolve all of that and then just simply have program income coming back into the agency.
Clear as light.
Pardon me?
Clear as light. There are, there are a lot of pieces to it.
There is a lot of pieces to a lot of things because otherwise we, we do not want to be in this situation. We, we, as a city, so switching hats as a city, we aggressively and very efficiently used our ARPA money, probably better than anybody else in this county. And and we're very proud of it. It's why this city is where it is. When I got here, we had just shy of an eighteen month trajectory of going belly up. We've turned that trajectory to five years and we want to keep it out five years at all given time. And so for instance, some of the properties that the city has bought, they were bought, rehabbed. They're on the tax rolls. Those increments are actually taxed on the tax rolls. They are providing tax increment and program revenue back in, which are allowing us to do other projects. And those buildings then are sold within five years. The tenants get first right of option on them. And so that will allow us to do And so that will allow us to do things that we otherwise cannot. When you actually look at our plan, you see certain things. For instance, when they did the street skate downtown, you see part of street skate downtown, those vaults, unfortunately, were not built to the conformity that we would have liked them to be. That's unfortunate, but they're failing. And so where's the money to fix them? There's trees in them. They are not the proper tree skate for a highway, so they have the wrong trees. And so the grates, we have to go out there almost every year and inspect them and reweld them because they've become a liability. There was no water line or power lines put in those vaults, and so therefore, we run water up them. And so the reality is, is that we're going to have to fix this. Where's that money going to come from? We want it to come from the Urban Renewal Agency and continue to make our downtown the lifeblood because cities, if they don't die, if they don't grow, they'll die on the vine. And they are actually the economic engine for counties. And so we have to continue to share the vision of our City Council and the Urban Renewal Agency and continue to move the city forward in line with the will of the taxpayers. If you all recall, if you participated early on, one of the first things, and it's the only thing that was an oddity in our ARPA money, is we actually did a citywide survey. We did two surveys. We did the national community survey and we also did the law enforcement survey. And we wanted to figure out where everybody was, what they wanted, what they thought. And so interestingly enough, not getting anywhere political, but if you actually followed the mayor's campaign this time, it was intriguing, the verbiage he had. It said, making your priorities, our priorities, or something like that. Well, it is actually initiative that started in 2021 with those statistical surveys, and that's what we have been implementing. Moreover, starting in next month and then going throughout the winter months, the city staff, the department heads and the City Council will be engaged in the most aggressive strategic planning that the city has ever been involved in, and it's going to be run by the Coraggio Group. So all of the dots, if you will, are starting to come together so that we can grow. And there are going to be some additional growth opportunities for the city that we're working on, thanks to some state legislation. And at some point, those will actually be before you all. But let's get back to your call for tonight. And so if there's not any additional questions, we're paying Elaine by the hour, so I want to be mindful. Unfortunately, we're not paying y'all by the hour and I don't want to be disrespectful to you, but that's a cash register and I love Elaine, but she, she...
It's a constable.
Yes. URA money.
Okay, so Derek, what are we doing? What do we, what do you need?
I just need a unanimous recommendation from, so a motion from the county commission.
Elaine, you ready it up for us again, please?
You should have it properly in your packet.
Yes, it is in your packet as well.
Yeah. Should get it up there on the screen for you because it's a long one. But it's not something, as she stated, that plenty of commissions do often. This is only the second. You know, there was the initial and then one other increment and then this.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read this motion here. I move the North Bend Plan Commission, adopt the facts, findings of the Plan Commission status report in Section 4, interlining analysis to draft Plan Amendment. As part of the North Bend removal Plan Amendment, forms the North Bend comprehensive plan and recommend that the North Bend City Council adopt the proposed Plan Amendment. Second.
Alan?
Not there, yes.
All in favor say aye.
No discussion?
In the question, I would just like to say that I think it's a fabulous idea and thank you for your vision and coming up with so many different ways to move this forward. I think, I think the North Bend has stuck for a long time. And consequently, about the same time that I moved here, you moved here, things started breaking loose. So one of us had something to do with that. So thank, thank you. Okay, so all in favor, okay, we, all in favor say aye. We did that. Motion's passed.
Thank you. Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you.
It was your happiness.
Thank you all.
And you're fired now.
No, she's got a lot more agencies to go to.
So you guys are gonna break down on the housing and tear down the...
Yeah, next, next year. We still have a ways to go. We still need approval by the school boards. They have to leave their vote until February. They're gonna have a work session in January. We've met with them twice now, and so they have now asked for an additional work session. There's zero impact to them, but this is not something that they typically have before them. So they want to really make sure they understand it. I suspect it's because they plan at some point to go out for another bond initiative and they want to make sure nothing affects. I think that's part of why they are asking us to take out the plan. They don't optics of, this is not going to be a Taj Mahal development, not at those dollars, you can't. And so we'll continue to work with them. If the school district does not approve, the maximum indebtedness cannot go forward, which means that our 20% increment that we're allowed to do will not be able to have that project move forward. It will fail. And so it will rest. We have the next stop for us. We've already met with the Porticoes Bay. They have their meeting coming up. All indications are they are on board with this. They benefit just like the school system does. But ultimately, if they approve, you approve, the City Council approves. If the school district does not concur, that project will be dead in the water and will be stuck with a blighted building. So we can't just demolish it because of the grave. And so there is a significant part of that building below grave, but then, and so just demolishing and leaving there would actually create quite the crater for that area. All right, thank you.
So is there any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, any commission comment?
I just have one note. I'm not a commission. I do pose that we cancel December 16th Planning Commission meeting in the interest of the holidays and lack of agenda items. If that is okay. I have a little issue there.
I think we got through plenty of intended this meeting, so I think we, as long as you guys have that. I think it's fine. You guys, okay? Okay with that?
Yes.
How about some commissioners?
Yeah, I had an interesting time. Thank you. You earned it.
Thank you. And then again, I'm excited to see North Bend moving forward and coming up creative ideas to...
To it. So you said that the, you have, there's no ownership, actual ownership on that property that you're developing a, you know, a company to...
A governmental agency. And ultimately, it will be decided between the City Council and the Urban Renewal Agency.
So we heard somebody...
Because if we sold it outright, there would not be ongoing program increment for, say, the next 75 to 100 years off of that property.
Just as a point of order, is this...
I'm gonna go ahead and close the meeting.